To order the committee, the committee would like to welcome the audience. Viewers may watch the live board committee meetings online at TCaps.net/Board. Recording meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. So first of all, I'd like to welcome Jessie Houghton and Dan Tiesworth to your first curriculum committee meeting since your new roles. So welcome to the two of you. And I would be missed if I didn't say this is Heidi's last curriculum committee meeting. So really, so we'll, we'll get to that at the end, but just wanted to recognize that.
Appreciate it.
Yes, 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 yes. So moving right along, we'll go into public comment and are there any public comment? Okay, so we'll keep on moving. We'll go next into procedural items. We are at the draft meeting minutes portion of the agenda. Are there, are there any changes? No changes, so the minutes will remain as posted. Next item on the agenda is the 2024-25 TCaps district course catalog and will defer to Ms. Skodak.
Yes, so you'll see a lot of updates on there. The majority are from that Compass Learning Center. So you'll see we used Pilot as a demo program this summer and it was very successful with our students. We have decided to continue on with that for our Compass Learning Center and offer additional opportunities. You will see additional classes added next board curriculum as well because I saw a few pop up on there today. So you'll see additional happening, but there's, this is basically all, every time we add a class, whether it's Edgenuity, which is one of our platforms that we use, or Acelis, we have to have different course numbers for each of those. So that's why you see so many kind of same courses, but redundancy with Acelis in front of it. And then we also have some updates to middle school and that has to do with our course, courses that are offered under Michigan Virtual versus Edgenuity. Our students seem to be more challenged with the Michigan Virtual classes as well as they offer additional support. So we're shifting more of our classes from Edgenuity to Michigan Virtual. And then we have one in-person update and that's Middle School Seminar. And so that used to be referred to as Advisory. And that update occurred when basically in our audits with our people accounting, that we had to revise it to make sure it was in alignment with people accounting code. So update in seminar and you'll see also a course description update in there to be in compliance with people accounting. So the middle school principals did a nice job. They did some research with other schools that offer seminar in other places and provided a great update for that, so.
That's great. I've gotten some questions around what is MS Seminar? So yeah, so good, good explanation. So thank you for that.
You are welcome.
All right. Anything else on course catalogs? I think we, our course catalog, I think we got them.
Yes, you'll have, you'll have additional next time because I saw some pop up today.
Okay, so will, if there's no, what am I trying to say? If there's no objection?
It's morning, Erica, right?
We'll move those to the consent calendar for the board, the full board to approve. Is that okay? Okay, great. All right, so then we'll move into informational items. So the first item is the Board Curriculum Learning Series and I will defer to Ms. Houghton and Mr. Tiesworth.
Sure, so we wanted to tell you a little bit about some professional learning that our instructional staff has done this summer and then our first few days here on the grounds with our staff back. So the first slide here just outlines some of the training that our secondary teachers have been engaged in. And this is a snapshot and we know that a lot of our teachers over the summer, it's their opportunity to connect to their content-specific professional organizations and learnings. And our staff has been awesome about wanting to ensure that they're connected and they know, you know, best practice and new tools and things out there. So lots with College Board, that's who does the advanced placement programming. We've got a brand new AP course running this year. It's called AP Seminar and that's kind of running at that 10th grade honors level. It will, students will earn that credit for 10th grade English through their AP Seminar. So both West Senior High and Central High School had teachers who got trained in that. We did have some new AP teachers this year at the high schools, so we sent some trainings there. And then at both high schools, we have teachers who engage with College Board through grading AP exams. So they go out to the locations where they're graded and that's great professional learning and opportunities for our teachers to connect and really calibrate their instruction. And then with our math curriculum, our middle schools this year, for all of our on-level, grade-level programming, are moving to that Inspiring Connections curriculum, which has a better readability and a higher engagement and some good instructional strategies for, for students and teachers. And so we had 18 middle school math teachers, included some of our special ed teachers who co-teach in those courses, go to a training here in town. And then some of our new hires got connected with our CPM, which is our, that's sort of the backbone curriculum our middle school and high school teachers use. There were some my perspective switches, so some of our ELA leadership teams from the middle school went to that. And then there's been a lot of interest and excitement in sort of that coding, game design, AI thing realm. So we had a couple of our high school teachers going to that and learning about what else is out there and what programs. And then the last one is pretty cool too. Our entire TC High staff, you'll see that photo there, engaged in a two-day training with Capturing Kids' Hearts. So we had a trainer come in and work with that staff in mid-August on, you know, how to really support those students, how to engage them, how to create communities that are connected and proactive and have a positive culture from day one. And great feedback from the TC High staff on that one.
For sure. Anything you want to add on that secondary training? I would just say overall, we had quite a few very relevant and connected trainings this summer for staff. And it's great to see even in Capturing Kids' Hearts, all those staff opted in on days that they didn't have to. And they had staff, not only the teaching staff, they also had support staff participate because that's a part of the culture of the program and learning a little bit about it. So just really great trainings occurred this summer and excited to see where those connections happen this year.
Will you talk a little bit about the Capturing Kids' Hearts? I don't, I'm not familiar what, what that is. Like what, what kind of training and just, just, just total curiosity.
Okay, so Capturing Kids' Hearts, actually Kristin Prokowsky did it in her previous district. Jeremy Howe has done it, I think, in a previous district. There's a few throughout the district, but really it is focused on, and we talk about it all the time, how are you making connections with students to actually get to the academic side? Like if a kid knows they care about you, that changes actually the atmosphere and the environment that they're in and actually allows them to get to the academic pieces. I think probably the most important piece of that is how you look at the connections you're making and especially with TC High. Like how are you building a community at TC High? So they had two days of focus and it was really around not only the non-academic, but how then do you get students to engage in the academic? It's really around that socio-emotional piece and building stronger connections that actually, you know, have impact especially on the students that attend TC High. So it is a national program, so Capturing Kids' Hearts is in many places. So if you go online and do a little quick search on it, you'll see kind of their beliefs and philosophies behind it. It's in line with some other training they've done, restorative practice and conferencing. And so it's really that integrated piece of bringing those together to actually be able to build a strong foundation and get to the academic pieces.
Got it. Okay. And I, I mean, I remember I just needed a little refresher on.
And it changes the mindset of the adults too. Because it's, it's a different philosophy around where you start with teaching and learning.
Good. Thank you for that.
Thank you. And then Dan, do you want to talk a little bit about some summer learning our elementary teachers have been working on?
Yeah, Heidi, just chime in because I think you did some of the summer work also. But CKLA, so we have our early adopters right now between 15 and 20 teachers that are starting that CKLA series, trying to get in front of it a little bit so they can kind of teach a teacher as we move into next year. Reading League, so Reading League was here and this will also be part of our August PD slide, but currently our teachers right now are in Reading League training at Montessori and Central High School. Math fluency planning, I know that's always, even from my experience when I was at Westwood before East Middle, fluency, especially in that third and fourth grade, multiplication, even going down to second grade, two and three-digit addition subtraction. Those are our building blocks when they move into further math, if they don't have those components. And our data though, kind of showed us throughout the years that we struggle with that math fluency piece. So doing a little planning around that because I see that math fluency is also going to move into a couple of our PLCs in the elementary this year. And then department work with scope and sequence. I know Heidi worked with science, I know that social studies met also. Science in particular with those FOS kits, I think they did a great job as far as simplifying so teachers can access those. And then with social studies kind of moving away from that Michigan Open book and they're using more of a scholastic news model, more of a daily reading. And then also we worked with science and social studies to start to make some connections with CKLA. There's a lot of science and social studies embedded in that reading curriculum. That kind of helps us hit those standards without moving away from the reading curriculum too much.
Got it. Go ahead.
And the only thing I would add there is that, that idea about we're on the foundation of adopting CKLA. And so we've had really great conversations with the department leaders about exactly what Dan was saying. So how are we looking at timing and connections that are happening in that CKLA curriculum? Is there opportunity to adjust, let's say, a science unit of study so it aligns with those CKLA sequence? And then you can actually do parallel and actually get more bang for your buck. So there's more tying to the actual understanding of what's happening as well as the application of science or social studies into the alignment with CKLA. That is going to be a big thing moving forward is how are we maximizing our time and using opportunities like that to look at those cross-curricular connections and make alignments more strategically.
Yeah, this adoption and I did a little work with it during the summer, I think about week three. But what they did last year and moving into the summer was just really deliberate about how they first got to Reading League and so that why behind the science and the research behind the CKLA. Our administrators went through some PD in August and it was just eye-opening. And everyone in the room, as much reading background as everyone had with our, with our 12 administrators there from elementary, learned something. It was really good training. That's what our teachers are going through for the next two days. And this is just how they're rolling it out, right? Where it's, we have people that are going to be doing it and our goal this year is to make that because that's a lot coming in July when those, you know, when all the materials get dropped and how we can make it as smooth as possible for our elementary's teachers doing a whole new reading curriculum. That's it to do. And we learned a lot from journeys on what not to do, I think. So getting ahead of it in this way should hopefully make it a lot smoother.
That's great. That's great. Good.
So that's some of the pre-summer, August back-to-school work that our staff has been doing. And then, you know, what we've completed so far, our administrators onboard a week earlier than our teaching staff, a couple of weeks earlier. So we've done some joint principals meetings, some elementary principals, as Dan talked about the Reading League. We've done some secondary, a lot of calibration, a lot of us talking about, you know, setting, setting the tone for the start of the school year, bringing back our staff. Obviously, we're doing a lot of hiring in those last few open positions as well. And then Dan and I supported our new teachers to TCAPS with an orientation. Our HR and our technology team did the first day of the training and then curriculum came in the second day. We had about, about 40 teachers total, would you say, Dan?
Good showing you.
Yeah. And we bring in our teacher leaders to, to go through, you know, how do we, how do we make their transition into TCAPS as smooth as possible? And how do we support them with their needs? And then obviously yesterday we had our kickoff at West Senior High with our whole staff. So it's exciting, fun. And then this today and tomorrow, we have time with all of our staff back in the buildings with some targeted learning and some onboarding for everyone. So elementary, Dan, you want to talk about where your staff is at?
Yeah, so as I already mentioned, Reading League for the next few days. But we also have, so we have yesterday, so yesterday is not a required day, but a lot of elementary buildings get up and running. They have three hours at their building. And then Thursday is Teacher Work Day and principals also have two hours for, with elementary teachers for a staff meeting. So unlike previous years, previous years, we would actually have a Tuesday or Wednesday also where they do meeting, building PD, but we filled that in with Reading League. So during that time, I was out in some buildings yesterday, just some great connections. A lot of the teachers show up, we have probably about 90% come in on that Monday and get up and going. A lot of that focus on the Monday and Thursday and throughout the year and PLCs will be around that instructional rounds and explicit instruction. Elementary's have done quite a bit with explicit instruction the last couple of years. Now they're moving to how can we continue to grow it and then also monitor it? And rounds is a way that we take those components of explicit instruction and kind of keep them to the forefront even as we add more curriculum. Because the explicit instruction is how we teach a curriculum, not the actual nuts and bolts of the state standards itself.
Yeah, and our secondary teachers, similar yesterday, we had about 95% attendance in all, in all five of the secondary buildings too, as I touch base with them. And then today, all of our middle schools are together out at East Middle School, really talking tier-one instruction, what are best practices? They've got some teacher leaders doing breakout sessions for that. They're launching their professional learning communities together with a common theme for all of our middle school teachers, which is a great cross-district connection and alignment there. Our high schools are both, are all three of them are at their sites today, really reflecting on, you know, what does our student achievement data from last year look like? What kind of goals are we setting for this year? And then, you know, what is our work going to look like in shape as a building? And then on Wednesday, all of our secondary teachers will start together in their departments. So look at some content-specific time to look at what are the best teaching instructional strategies? What is our curriculum alignment? Let's make some connections with our new staff and who our leaders are in those areas. So secondary is sort of split between that building time and then that content-specific time, so.
And just add on, our elective teachers are included in the Reading League today. And then tomorrow, they also do department with high school for elementary.
So like K-12 music will all be together tomorrow to do some music-specific professional development. And K-12 art will all be together tomorrow. And then I know PE is doing some CPR and first aid training and some of that stuff together. Yeah, yeah, and more language is working together tomorrow too. So a nice balance between both of those, right?
And coaches, the athletic coaches are doing their thing.
Yeah, so our athletic coaches get their CPR and first aid training and our athletic directors kind of have run sessions already. I know, I know Central in particular ran a session already for all their fall coaches to get all of those guys trained. That's part of the requirement to be a head coach is that they've got that certification done, yep.
And marching band is already marching.
Marching band is off and going and it was great. I was working here one afternoon, my window was open and I could hear the marching band right over there. I was like, oh, this is great. Yeah, so the next section is this, like what are our kids been doing in August? So if you want to start, Dan.
Yeah, kindergarten signing day, so that's something as I was at Westwood a few years ago. We moved over, we threw the old kindergarten roundup in the spring. And then obviously with all kids, but especially our younger population as they go through the summer, they grow so much that we moved it to August and we call it kindergarten signing day. Like similar to MHSA or EC with athletics where they sit down with the backdrop and actually sign it. It's, it's really fun to do. So having that in the spring, all of our, all of our elementaries now do that in, in August now. And it helps us kind of support the students, get them split up in a decent way. And then also helps determine that JK number two for, for junior kindergarten. Who's ready for kindergarten and who could use an extra year?
Class of 2037.
I know, that's crazy. Makes me feel super old.
And the junior kindergarten class is pretty full?
They are, yeah. As far as I, you know, the, the number to split at kindergarten is around 25. So that's our max that we have and then after that, then we add another section. There are no splits for, like there's no K-1 split. We don't split kindergarten because they're just so far apart. And JK varies building to building. I think they're all double digits. But that's just a fantastic program as far as, which it was for my kid. My kid actually ended up doing kindergarten twice. He's a November birthday.
You could always send him back.
Probably could. There's some things he could work on even though he was in seventh grade. Yeah. Last year at dinner, we argued about Q for about a half an hour and whether it should be in the alphabet or not. So that was, that was a rousing discussion. Awesome.
And then with our secondary students, I mean, fall athletics is up running. A lot of our teams have already competed. We have our first home football game on Thursday. West is playing Gaylord at Thirby Field, so exciting. I mean, we've got, I mean, 18 teams that we have going in TCAPS, over 700 student athletes from both high schools engaged in that. So just great programming for our kids and it's always fun to see, especially the freshmen coming in, getting connected to a team, sort of like helps ease some of that anxiety of starting in TCAPS. And you know, that's our ninth grade year, we see new kids to TCAPS. A lot of our, you know, our non-TCAP kids will enroll and so to get them engaged in the athletics. And then I also know the musical for Central kicked off their practice yesterday. So again, like a lot of kids over there, Central's got the Fall Musical this year and West will be in March.
What is Central's musical?
Suzical.
Suzical. Ah, that's great.
So I think they had about 50 kids over there at the auditorium practicing yesterday. So just, and marching band too has been going and it, just a lot of really cool events for, for our kids going on in August as well, so.
That's great. Yeah, I've seen the cross-country kids out there running, 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 so practicing all over town. So that's, that's good. Good to see them out there, so good.
And then we did just want to highlight a little bit, Katie Cubish has been working really hard over the summer with that Student Support Network and what she's providing to kids and families. She's had that pop-up shop and wanted to give you a little bit of numbers here as to how many students we've already had in connected to that and who's been able to get some supplies and get prepared for school. So I mean, just, I mean, over 200 students have been able to connect to that, so.
It was a great article if you haven't seen it yesterday in the, it was the ticker or the paper.
It was the ticker today, but it was the Northern Exposure yesterday, yeah.
Just kind of outlined all of the different programs and things that have been a part of that. Pretty powerful, see the amount of work that they've done, just phenomenal work that Ginger and Katie and that whole team have done. They're just taking it to a whole other level and that is no doubt needed for the support of our kids. So just really, really good program.
So good. And not only now, just throughout the whole year. Katie has done an amazing job and Ginger and that team for sure.
Yeah, I remember, gosh, it was right, I think when you were hired, maybe a little bit after, but we were the, just the disorganization of not, not.
And not bad stuff.
Yeah.
It's just we had a little bit of duplicative effort, you know, in those elements, so putting it all together.
Streamline kind of those efforts and Katie has just done such a great job, just kind of streamlining and organizing and, you know, making sure that our kids are getting what they need, you know?
Yeah, because we used to have partners in, in education and then we used to have the Intense Student Support Network, the ISSM. And so, you know, I just, I remember that element of when we'd say, well, this group needed water bottles and this group had a bunch of them on the shelf.
Yeah.
But they didn't know, so they took money and went and bought them and it was like, what are we doing?
Yeah.
And so we, we are streamlined now and have just taken it up quite a few different notches of levels of support.
Yeah.
Pretty cool.
And just a quick shout out to the community. I've gotten a lot of back-to-school needs of either real estate companies doing back-to-school drives or, you know, Father Fred's done, you know, just all the different pieces and parts that our community.
Rotary with their backpacks again?
Yeah, Rotary with the backpacks and just people really trying to help where they can help, so, yeah.
Speaking of that.
Yes, and then slide down, we go. Right, right. No, the one last thing I'll say about that Student Support Network is we have such a phenomenal community in Traverse City and it's great because it's a one-point like person for, if you're, if you're a community member and you want to get engaged and you want to support the kids, this is a great, getting connected to Ginger and Katie and supporting through that way is always welcome and we really appreciate that too, so. But yeah, that, the backpack stuffing that took place here, so there you go, there are the numbers on that. So over a thousand backpacks were filled and then distributed to sites. Every student at Blair and Traverse Heights receives a backpack, great supplies in those. And so lots to get out to kids and to help support that transition. So huge thank you to Rotary for that.
We had some of those backpacks too at the, at the shopping event here as well. The kids were able to get the backpack if they missed it, so very cool.
And I heard that all the high school backpacks have been distributed.
Is that right?
Yeah, that's what I heard. Yeah, that's what I heard yesterday.
Yes, high schools did those at their registration days, so yeah.
Yeah, that's Robinson. That's great. That's great.
Lovely.
Well, we did want to take a moment to recognize Heidi and to thank her for all of her service to TCAPS and all the roles that she's played and this is her last board curriculum meeting.
It is my last, yeah.
So we just wanted to take a moment to thank her for her work with our kids.
Thank you, it's been my pleasure.
I know, Heidi, you've just been so great, always open to questions and, you know.
Love questions, always.
Flannoy's not here to give you one last, you know, data review.
You know she wants.
I know, but.
We'll get her questions if you can answer before you go.
That's right, we've got you till Saturday, so.
I can do that one-on-one intervention.
That's right.
Good, good, good.
Won't take long.
I feel like it will end with wine, right?
Yeah, exactly, but yeah, just big shoes to fill and just all of your contributions to TCAPS throughout the year, so.
You are in great shape. Dan and Jessie are going to do a great job. They hit the ground running, they're doing excellent, so it's, I have no worries about where they're headed.
Yeah, and yeah, just thank you for being so present here at the end too. Sometimes people go on and, but you've been just really present and we're really happy for you, so.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
And I have enjoyed seeing a lot of the robotics activities.
Lots of fun there. Still can volunteer, right?
Yes, you can, you're more than welcome to volunteer.
Jessie, I know what you look like.
Well, any other items anybody has? It's kind of a short meeting today. But well, with that, our next curriculum committee meeting is a little bit of a change. It will be October 8th on Tuesday at 8:30 in this room. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting, so thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.